Meeting of the Finance Committee of the Village of Burnham, Cook County, Illinois. Today is July eighth. It's called a meeting to order on July, oh, sorry.
Oh, I didn't.
I'm sorry, July ninth. I should have checked my phone. My voice says seven, so we're okay. I can call the meeting to order, roll call.
Trusty Cat?
I'm here.
Trusty Greer?
Here.
Trusty Richardson?
I'm here.
Yeah, bro.
Okay, acknowledgement of the mailing of the notice of the special meeting of the Finance Committee in the Village of Burnham, Cook County, Illinois with the agenda to Chairman Judge Cap Junior, each member of the Finance Committee, and a posting of the notice of special meeting of the Finance Committee with the agenda on the Village Bulletin Board and website. And that was done?
Yeah.
What? Oh, July, make a motion that the public notice was acknowledged? Another second?
Second.
Roll call.
Cat?
Yes.
Trusty Greer?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Discussion of consideration of and taking action on the opening of the meeting for any person to address the Finance Committee. We need to make a motion that we open the meeting to the public for anyone to address the Finance Committee.
I'll second it. Trusty Cat?
Yes.
Trusty Greer?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
All right, anybody have anything, any comments?
Well, before that, can I ask why there is no pledge of allegiance?
This is a special meeting, we don't have to. This is a special committee meeting. So we have, we have special separate rules. Anything else?
Interesting, John, you're a veteran, I'm surprised.
No, we don't, this meeting we don't have to.
Video call, could you record me, or could you time me? I haven't started yet.
First state your name, who would that just speak to?
Sounds like a little child. I'm John Heiduk. Last meeting I attended, I asked you, Mr. Polk, about giving residents relief from our tax, from our high taxes, from that one million dollar grant. You said you never said that. Fact is, you told us you'd be giving some relief, but you would not be given specifics. That's what you said at the time. I'm just wondering, when are we gonna get the specifics and the relief? There will be a short video coming out soon of you saying just that, Mr. Polk.
John, that question's not appropriate to this meeting.
It's my, it's part of my statement, can I go, John?
All right, but we're not gonna answer that one.
You said no to the pledge of allegiance, could you please stop interrupting me now? It's ridiculous. Back in 2021, Burnham received over $600,000 COVID money for grant. That money was supposed to be used for the police payroll. That's what you guys put on the grant application. Well, you gave us a $175 credit on our water bills from that money. Was that legal? Yeah, you did that. Fact is, you keep telling us how well we're doing. Fact is, you don't need a grant to give us a $200 or $300 credit on our water bills. This board approved Mr. Polk's $7,400 raise, over $8,000 raises for the clerk and for the treasurer, and over $6,000 raise to Mr. Polk's brother-in-law, who runs Public Works. If you could, if you could do that? I heard that from several sources. You guys got in the way with it, so don't worry about it. If you could do that, you can give us relief. All of that was on my newsletters. Now, Mr. Polk, you've had a lot of people tell me my newsletters weren't true, that they were lies. You still tell me that. Now, I'm not Antoine Russell. I have no idea where Antoine Russell got his numbers, but everything on my newsletters was true. If it wasn't, I wouldn't have headed on them. Sad thing is, Mr. Polk, people believed you. Now, where's our relief, sir? Last time, last meeting I was here, I mentioned-
All right, your time is up.
No, you guys interrupted me, darn it.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything?
Last time I mentioned Officer Kooch was being told to retire. Clerk, clerk-
John, your time is up.
Mr. Polk, the Lord is watching you. Am I glad you're doing this? Am I glad you're doing this? Thank God. And you're being recorded.
Anything else, public, anybody else have anything? Okay, so let's make a motion to close the meeting to the public.
I make a motion to close the meeting to the public.
Hey, Michael, let this happen.
I'll second it. Roll call.
Trusty Cat?
Yes.
Trusty Greer?
Yes.
Trusty Richardson?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay, discussion of consideration of and taking action on the appropriations of sums of money deemed necessary to defray all necessary expenses and liabilities of the Village of Burnham for the fiscal year beginning May first, 2025, and ending April 30, 2026, and the specification of objects and purposes for which the appropriations are made and the amount appropriated for each object or purpose. All right, so we're gonna start with Public Works, since Duane is in the hot seat. He wants to get back to work.
I wasn't put in front, brother. I didn't know nothing about it.
That explains a lot.
Let me get to that page. Okay, so we gotta jump in a few pages to Public Works, that you guys all came-
Yes.
Turn the pages. Right, I think we skipped all the way down to Legal Services, Special Counsel. Could we go that far down?
Sure.
You see it? Everybody see it?
Yes, I see it.
All right, we budgeted five thousand. Spent forty-five hundred, is that?
No.
Forty-six hundred. Forty-six, six.
Oh, I see it, forty-six, sixty.
No, it's been reported.
Oh, we spent three forty? Don't keep it at five? Engineering expenses, we budgeted a thousand and didn't use any of it. We'll leave it? Yeah. IT maintenance, we budgeted eight thousand and spent seventy-nine hundred. Office supplies, we budgeted a thousand and didn't use any of it. Probably just helped themselves because I would have defined it. We could leave that. Natural gas expense, we budgeted seventy-five hundred and only spent forty-two hundred. Yeah, you might wanna lower that one, especially if he wants to buy something else. Lower that to five? Yeah. Electric expense, we budgeted fifteen thousand, we spent fifty-seven thousand. Six hundred and seventy. Electric expense. You have all these buildings, right? You're responsible for the electrical, all the buildings?
I'm still paying for it.
So it's like, it's kind of the controller, the light controller, the street lights. It goes under this. You should have the history. In your packet?
What? And it in here?
So, like I said, it's like a light, the traffic light controller.
Because we never broke down.
The street lights going up on that?
Yeah.
We had a couple of those knocked down. We had to replace it.
Also for the major fellow, too.
Correct. Right.
Now we need to raise it, though.
Right.
Maybe twenty-five or thirty thousand or something. Well, I didn't see that page in my packet, the one you're holding up.
Is page seventy-five?
No, I don't. Oh, I didn't have that. Or Carmella didn't bring it over for him. Okay, so what do we decide, twenty-five thousand, thirty thousand?
Thirty.
There you go, electric expense for traffic lights and controller. Oh, that was our problem. We budgeted sixty thousand for that one and didn't use it. So that's what our problem was.
Oh.
See that?
So we have to-
We have to fix that. Yeah, the next one is where we budgeted.
Should we combine on that?
Or separate them? We could, might as well separate them, because one of them is the comm ed, right? The comm ed should go under one and then everything else should go under the other?
The comm ed would have been true, the need is better repaired, right?
Right, need would be repaired.
Comm ed is gonna follow.
So, let's, so let's change that other one back, then. Go back to like fifteen thousand and let's leave it the way it is. Right, leave it fifteen and sixty?
So the fifteen would be need and the sixty would be comm ed?
No, the other way around. The need will be the, yeah, the need will be the sixty. Maybe we need to get a better handle on what exactly was the comm ed part, but we'll let it, that'll be good for now. Office expense purchases, we budgeted five hundred, didn't use any, so we want to just leave that?
Yeah, we leave it.
Okay, purchase of machinery, we budgeted a thousand, didn't use any? Didn't buy any chainsaws or anything like that? We, we, string trimmers, chainsaws, you didn't buy any of that stuff?
Oh, yes, we, we bought a-
Oh, that might be smaller equipment, that'll work more on-
Bought a head truck.
Okay, here you go, vehicle purchase, we budgeted twenty-five hundred and you didn't use any of it.
Right. We do need a new, another snowplow with spreader. They have one on sale, IML Auto, and they have one for one thirty-five, it's stainless steel back with ten-foot plow, it's a freight liner, twenty-fifteen.
What would you get for what you're trading in? Would you have now worth anything in trade?
We could, we have the bucket truck and we have the tractor. We need the cell load, we can sell those for, I can get twenty-five hundred for the bucket truck and we can get fifteen for the tractor. They're old. We have a bad vehicle.
It's fifteen hundred fifty thousand.
Twenty, fifteen, I think.
I might want the bucket truck for twenty-five hundred, trimming trees around the house.
You know, Don, he has one for twenty, twenty-five, twenty-five thousand. It's a nice bucket truck, we can look into that.
So, so give us the number.
I'm saying with both trucks-
I don't have my receipt, my bill.
I would say maybe one fifty, hundred fifty thousand.
All right, so we'll, we'll budget a hundred fifty thousand for your new dump truck?
And your dump truck and the bucket truck. Uh, yeah, shift the plow truck and get one thirty-five.
Oh, he's sorry, by used bucket truck?
Yeah.
I thought you were getting rid of your old one.
Well, we can get rid of the other ones also. We'll get, probably get twenty-five for that.
Okay, office equipment lease, we budgeted a hundred, didn't use any, so we'll just leave it? Office equipment maintenance, we budgeted a hundred, didn't use any of it? Vehicle repair and maintenance, we budgeted fifty thousand and used a hundred ninety-three thousand.
And so what was that?
Okay, that, we had a lot going on with the trucks.
The yellow truck left a part of that.
And preferred, normally does the repairs on them, they moved on it, so we had to get a new maintenance guy. We barely made it to winter, but-
So, let me correct that.
Higher than that one. So what do you think your maintenance will be now, if this is gonna get a new truck?
Well, I'd say be on the safe side, keep it at fifty.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah. And equipment maintenance, you had a ten thousand and spent nineteen thousand.
Pretty much saying, they wanted to break down. I could say we probably could keep that at, keep it at ten.
I'll just roll there. All right, leave it at ten. Street traffic signal maintenance, we spent, yeah, budgeted ten thousand and spent ninety-two hundred. Just leave that the same?
Yeah, just leave it.
Building site improvements, we budgeted ten and didn't use any of it?
I would say keep that the same.
Illinois Department of Transportation, we budgeted a thousand, didn't use any, what was that?
Keep it the same.
Phone and cable, we budgeted thirteen hundred and then three, six hundred and thirty dollars. Probably could go down a little bit on that.
We take down a thousand.
Cable and internet service, twenty-seven hundred, we spent twenty-nine hundred. That's going up, too, they raised the taxes on that, right? All right, we'll go to three thousand, whoops, did you get that? Security and alarm, we budgeted two thousand and we didn't use any. Here, leave it two thousand, right, we know one spot, we need to put another camera.
I would like to see if we can get a, maybe alarm system at some point, so let's go back up.
Over by, in the blue building?
At the, at the Public Works.
Oh, you don't have one there now?
No, not an alarm system.
I don't even have to know how much they cost.
Think I mentioned it to Jeff? We're gonna ask, tell the Jeff to reach that.
I'm sure you can get it down for two thousand. Right, dues and membership, we budgeted two thousand, didn't use any. I'm sorry, two hundred. Gasoline and oil, eighteen thousand five hundred, we used thirteen thousand, seven ninety-five. Or go to fifteen thousand? Gas prices are going down a little bit.
We're now.
Personnel training, you had three hundred, didn't use any of it? Just leave it. Health examination, eight hundred, you only used a hundred forty-two. All right, drop that to five hundred. Health, medical supplies, that's what we added? Okay, so we added that line, and so we didn't have anything budgeted, but we spent three thousand dollars in health. So health, medical supplies. You leave, you spend that much every year, supplies for health and medical?
It's not, it's for the AEDs. Now we have the AEDs.
Oh, so we have monthly maintenance on those, right?
Right, right.
For the diffusivity. Randy, you might wanna talk about getting that.
So what are we thinking, what's the total we need to cover that? I have no idea. What's the monthly fee on the AEDs?
Hundred and thirty dollars.
Yeah, they charge the one unit?
Is that for just, no, that's only, it's for one unit.
He has the senior center and Public Works, that, doesn't matter, all the other.
So the other part will suffer, then, you got?
Correct. And that's what we're gonna have to create back.
How can you not pay your own bill on there?
Yeah, well, Duane, that was discussed, and we decided to do another, how can, with, with the debt.
Oh, okay. So we better do at least three thousand then, and cover those, too?
Three, one?
Office equipment lease, we budgeted a hundred, didn't use any of it? That's all right? You say that, safety the same? Safety apparel, twenty-five hundred, and you used sixteen hundred, fifty-seven oh nine? Just leave that?
Keep it at twenty-five.
Wouldn't we buy, uh-
The vest, the shirts, the collat and stuff?
You know, what, with that is, you know, I think we got a handle on keeping the same people that we got, we normally would buy equipment and then a guy don't make it through, I mean, we gotta buy more. But the ones we got now, I think we're, you know, pretty safe to say that we just, you know, keep it.
I mean, but doesn't need to be twenty-five hundred? I would think that in most times, we would have to make a pledge, be more than twice a year, same.
I'd say, you know, through the winters, you wanna make sure you have jackets and sweatshirts. In the summer, what was that?
I mean, but it should last more than one year, I would say.
Go to two thousand.
We're gonna take it down to two thousand, we can do that.
Okay, IT purchases was eighteen hundred and we didn't use it?
Yes, yes.
Do you wanna make it down? What do you need in IT purchase? We didn't make it down.
Equipment purchases, twelve thousand, we spent eighty-seven hundred.
Keep it the same?
That's like the small equipment stuff, I think.
Yeah.
Regulatory compliance was a thousand, we spent seventy-five dollars. He left it. You could probably wanna go down to ten thousand on that one, because you need it, right? Equipment, we'll go to ten, because no one's spent sixty-seven, eighty-seven, we'll go to ten.
Are you ready?
Your equipment, we dropped you down to ten thousand.
Twelve to ten. No good.
Building repairs and maintenance, we budgeted ten thousand, we spent just over ten thousand.
I would say keep it at ten.
Building repairs and maintenance at the senior center, we budgeted twelve-five, we should be able to lower that one.
That's right, they're getting those doors in there.
Oh, yeah, the doors that are being installed right now.
They're getting doors over there.
What was that quote, do you remember? Do you remember what, how much it was for the senior center doors? Make sure we have enough to cover it, right?
Yeah.
That's kind of a long one for Duke, too.
Traffic sign expense, are they getting the same ones that open automatic, too, there? Button?
Yeah, it's gotta have a wheelchair accessible.
Oh, it's gonna be wider?
I'm thinking maybe down at the bottom.
Down at the bottom?
Yeah. No, that's one thing that we probably need to look at, is probably getting that deck, getting that deck we did. So all that, right?
We did the top door and the bottom one?
Well, if the person went in downstairs, it would have the capital status, but then they would have to get upstairs, now we have no issues, though.
I'm thinking they're probably gonna make both of them wheelchair. But we do need to make it that deck we did.
But why would you want downstairs, I need to be-
The thing shouldn't be over there, it shouldn't be.
Voting, we're pushing people up the ramp. But why would you want downstairs, I need to be?
If the people come in downstairs, there's no need to go upstairs?
No, no, I'm, I'm saying, if you make one upstairs and downstairs, it would be on the way from downstairs.
If you hadn't, and then-
About the two doors?
Yeah, yeah, but they got in and they still have to get upstairs to get inside, and that'd be another one.
Yeah, it just needs to be upstairs more, because that has the ramp.
You're kinda thinking that they both might, might need to be, just in case, I don't know.
Hold out there and approve, right?
Okay, but if you make it downstairs, kind of cap it something, once you get in the building, how you gonna get them upstairs?
You have to bring them out the building to go upstairs.
Right.
So basically, unless there's a specific function going on in the downstairs area, there's no need for them to be down. So we don't need them to have a ramp in the inside, most of the activities are upstairs, so that's where we can focus. But again, our doors, if, our two doors.
Being returned?
Yes. Oh, and that's my concern.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna have them.
No, okay, definitely.
So we just leave it at twelve-five? Let's have somebody covering it with a quote.
What, you're gonna make it thirteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
All right, the traffic sign expense, we only budgeted a thousand, it was forty-four hundred.
Oh, we are gonna-
You need to bring that up?
Yeah, there, I think I might hold community there sometimes.
Post and everything, bring, bring that up.
Would that be, would that be traffic sign or is that a street sign?
They were the stop signs, they're not, a parking sign.
Oh, that's where they come from, okay. All right.
Who are we gonna take it up to?
I see traffic sign, that would be considered a stop sign, right?
Yep.
Well, we never had a line in for street signs, who's could we add one? We need to come up with a price.
Probably be on maintenance, maintenance, I know.
I'll replace the one to add.
I'll just buy it. How we want to provide some of the-
They cost like thirty bucks a piece and every corner, we need two, that's sixty, right? I don't even know.
I mean, it is attractive, probably the stop.
I thought, we're, we're talking about the street sign, the name. We're talking about more of the naming signs, the street names.
Yeah, where did you order them, who sent them?
Whatever that company, the mayor did, right, mayor, street sign, something, signal something.
I mean, was that raised?
No, the mayor, he didn't do it, and we gotta go to-
Oh, I think, I think I get, I get, okay.
I got it, I have it, I have it all set up, we have an account number.
Can Patricia do it?
Yeah. But we need to know, we need to set up a plan to maybe do one part of the town every year or something. We need to get somebody to give us a quote to do the work.
Well, Wayne gave me a number. What's the guy's name?
Yeah, but then we need a number.
We get, you see on the sign.
Well, I mean, we could buy the- Well, I mean, we could buy the signs and then have somebody install them.
Yeah.
Well, I guess we need to.
The street name.
And you could come up with a plan, I'd like, what side of town is the worst, and maybe do like one section every year? That's a lot of work.
It is, it is.
So you wanna create a line item for the street names?
Right, let's do that.
So that made it, okay, all right.
Or you could put a street, um, put a street sign replacement in any, right?
Yeah.
That's also good, 'cause a lot of them are, especially on my side of town, there's some really old ones, they might be original.
New years wants to say your side of town.
But you know, some of them, once the letters are all faded away. 'Cause there, then we have a lot of missing.
Periodically, we've been changing some stop signs too, you get a lot of them fading out.
And that goes under the traffic sign.
And then you're putting new posts and all that too, but we need to find somebody to, to give us a bid on that.
For the street sign?
Yeah. I mean, that, I think, we could purchase them, but we need someone to install them. Or, or they could do the whole thing, right, they could, we have the vendor, but, whatever.
How much?
I don't know. So, what do we got now? Well, wait, hold, we're gonna change the street sign replacement, right?
Yeah.
We have it in here, so. Just put a ten, uh, ten or fifteen, I don't know.
So we put in the ten or fifteen?
Uh, maybe go fifteen.
Yeah, okay. And, and then, a traffic sign expense, that would be a stop sign, right?
Right, and then a party. And a party.
You know, and I should've looked into getting a quote, 'cause I know Kell City used somebody when they did theirs. 'Cause they didn't do them themselves, they had a company come and do it, but I'll, I could check with Jerry, he might remember who did it.
What should we do, make that ten?
Can you just come back and let us know about how much?
Yeah.
I don't know if I'll get any, I have a pro son number.
Have any, then. Make that ten.
Oh, so you're bumping that traffic sign expense up?
Yeah, what if we do, we're gonna spend, then that might wax.
Oh, we're, so we're, we're gonna add a new line item for, uh, street name?
Yes.
Sign replacement, yeah, for fifteen, yeah, okay.
And then the traffic?
Spend.
Sign expense.
For ten, right? So we'll put the stop signs under that, where they always go the traffic sign expense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But how much are you making that up?
Ten, yeah, yeah, like we always do, and then the, the street naming signs will go to the newer line item. Yeah, okay. So the maintenance of the street lights, we only budgeted two thousand and spent fifty-three hundred.
So you have to, how much?
I don't know. It's gonna definitely have to go up.
So these four, right, fifty-three?
Fifty-three hundred.
Yeah.
You know, we make it seem out of, out of.
When they burn out or they fall off or something.
Sometimes people knock them down, they get away.
Sometimes when it goes out, you gotta replace that lamp, lamps are expensive.
Six thousand, maybe, pretty big.
Yeah, six is good.
You're gonna six thousand with that?
So the next one is alley and street maintenance, we budgeted twenty thousand and spent almost nineteen thousand, so we did a pretty good job.
I think we can give same, yeah, keep that twenty.
We are the wrong. The next one, from Athens, you follow, but, uh.
Could be okay.
Yeah, well, we got, uh, you know, holes and stuff, it's like.
They fix them when they work on them, and then they eventually wash out because people drive like nuts and all that stuff. Same underbrings.
Four pillars.
The same houses have holes all the time because of the way they drive.
It works pretty good. Now I have to get off the subject, a resident over in, uh, Manistee, they had their whole garage taken out, concrete, and the apron replaced, and it fits perfectly with the, where the alley is at. So a lot of those aprons, they sink over the years, and that's how people be getting water in it, you know?
Yeah.
And, uh, the guy, he charged, I think, about sixty-five hundred dollars. But that's the whole garage with the apron. They did it over on Manistee.
What did the engineer tell us, the alley grade should be the same as the street? So whatever height the street is, that's the height that the alley should be. It's not high.
But, like I'm saying, aprons sink, and, and that causes problems. You know, the aprons when you go in, it's like, the amount of ramps that sinks down in that.
We had, uh, a question years ago on Saginaw, they built a new garage, they put in a new apron, and still put it two inches below the grade. Okay. Well, we didn't have.
Trees and stump removal and replace. We budgeted thirty thousand and spent forty. Maybe we should bring that too.
Maybe, maybe four there. I don't think, you know, we didn't have the time, we got a new vendor, charged, right, you can go there first. Twenty-two thousand won't be against that.
We're gonna keep it forty?
We don't want to go up to forty-five? Okay, we can do four.
MFT, they, they, they put in a little bit too, don't they?
Well, we can't use the MFT on, on trees anymore, unless they have an emergency, storm, um, grow trees all over the place, and then you can use the MFT money for that. Otherwise.
We're saying forty-five?
Yeah.
Next one is tree resurfacing and replacement. HMA patching, we budgeted twenty and spent thirty-seven thousand.
That came from the twenty-twenty-three city league grant, I got it through an asshole.
That was our year.
And then we got the, the ambushment, the protection of extension. The red one, the, the, the.
The way this go. What was the problem out here?
Now, where did that go?
It didn't come out of the MFT, I.
It's building quite fine, okay.
Yeah. Just leave it then?
Excuse me, woman, bye, which is in the air, just make it from the past.
Mayor? I got a chunk of all the gravel, I'm gonna, I got a sand for it.
Okay, go ahead guys. We only got about four, five more, I reckon.
Okay, snow and ice cream, local supplies, we, uh, budgeted fifteen thousand and only spent twenty-eight hundred.
What's that?
Doesn't it come on that MFT, when you budgeted?
Uh, over and pay for it with. Uh, this for the street, it's for, this for the street, right? I mean, it's not.
This is for, we took it out of, from more than salt.
But more than salt come out of the MFT.
And then we could lower this.
Have the bucket for it?
Well, yeah, if we, uh, I'm just gonna give it to somebody, if it's not a big, if it was, uh, actually, it still happened to the, the board, I have to prove that.
Okay.
Let me even happen to, okay. Let's see, what is it again?
Two. At least twenty.
We're talking about, snow and ice, which is salt probably, right?
Yeah.
We budgeted fifteen and only spent twenty-eight hundred, because it was paid for under MFT? Just leave it?
Probably the main fifteen.
All right, street and material repair, we budgeted ten and didn't use any.
Probably make that twenty-five, that's what we have. We can use it.
Say six forty-five?
Yeah. Sidewalk incurred repair, fifteen thousand, we didn't use any?
Uh. Then answer the problem. I mean, smell, I think, sorry, I'm scared. Well, that's MFT anyway. Okay, we put a question out, but I'm pretty sure the MFT does them up. Inside one, one, I'm sure. If you make that plan, I think that's more fair. Be okay, that must be probably a lot. Make that better.
Landscaping and beautification go to thirty?
Yeah.
Bacon property, twenty thousand, we spent seventeen, just leave down. Except we'll probably cut the grass in all the bacon lots.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Traffic, uh, calming expense, ten thousand, we didn't use any?
We didn't buy any.
What was that?
We're gonna buy it.
Yeah, that's the speed, I mean, we're gonna have to.
Ten minutes.
We have a lot of speed bumps left, right?
We can do that.
There's a whole bunch of those left.
Bad, you know, yeah.
On the pellets, right?
Yeah. We gotta put some oil down, people still have.
That would just leave it at ten then?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I really think we need to put it at every, in the section. Wherever we put them, because just having that one right there.
Yeah.
It, it, it don't really serve the purpose, because all they gotta do is feed them through, when they get their speed up, they still speak.
It don't fall out.
It don't.
That's what I mean, do we, uh, uh, do we need to put a graffiti down, save our town? We don't have to use the one we bought already.
Right. What are the other ones like, are they, they are something?
Some of them are asphalt, I mean, like permanent.
Oh.
Chicago them, yeah. And also, they're huge.
I'd have to, 'cause I'm, it's gonna need to have that one there, I mean, I want to.
Oh, so you're saying to put it at the other three?
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
You don't have the ones we haven't finished up on, right? Well, yeah, right, 'cause then it makes them all.
Oh, do like all four corners, or so, all three corner? Yeah, well, let's just use what we have for now and worry about that next year.
So the, what are we, point, we leave that amount?
It's like twenty.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think it does make it twenty, by the way, if, uh, if they come, yeah, MFT.
Animal control was ten thousand and we spent seventeen hundred.
Now, what do we need to do about that, you know, for even, uh, you know, it should, like, to, uh, we don't have animal control, so is that something we need to take away?
To create?
Yeah.
I'm seeing that.
Yes.
I'm a date guy.
So if we create a one, are we trying to have a, see, like, yeah, you can send those to house, the animals?
Public works doesn't wanna do it though, right?
Well, it's not, it's not, it's not, we have a lot of, we, that, we need, we have to have some place to take them, so.
Right.
We need, we need to have them. They don't take them in Chicago.
Well, we have, we have a spot by us, it's temporary, hold it, but then what do you do with them? After they, off so many gates, right? Even the animal welfare, like, they put them asleep.
Well, 'cause we have to, I mean, while we're.
No, but, but, yeah, animal welfare, they don't, I don't even know if they keep them a couple days and then they put them down.
How much do, um, yeah, we can charge, what we got is take the animal there, we allow.
They've dumped some there before, not, not legally. Because they really won't take ours unless we make an arrangement.
There's something we need to think about, uh, oh. I mean, let Larry come take that, fuck. Hey, put us on, put us on around, I'm thinking of something, okay?
Maybe we could, uh, or I'd have to talk to various.
Get us on the thing, yeah.
Right, here.
Make any, uh, new godblom.
That will, what you gonna ask him, Tim, please take us back?
Yeah. Or then ask him what he would charge with his animal control to care about animals, right?
That'd be the question.
What would, what would it cost us?
Okay, you go, oh.
You know, I'm gonna call Jerry and.
That's what he would, there you go.
Okay, animal.
Um, why don't we make it fifteen? We'll make a question. The garbage waste disposal? Which one of this?
This is what we build every month, our home.
Monthly? No, more than that.
Is that just for his building?
It's more than that.
Yeah, it's, it's his, his fee, like. Oh, it works. It's not the admin takes down.
His dumpster and stuff?
Right, like, yeah, the dumpster, garbage disposal, dump charges.
I love the dump, it was rated, the dump's a pit.
No, any dicks?
Or the dump at B. Okay.
Oh, they gave the dumpster a premium charge, mainly. And then, you said it's tires in there too?
Yes.
Did all those tires get picked up by that old wire mail?
Yeah.
Somebody dumped that?
They got it off of the wire, we have, we gotta get them one now, fuck. I cool with it, I thought.
Oh, I thought they were picked up, I noticed they were gone the other day, but I wasn't sure. So we better raise that a little bit.
Garbage waste disposal. What, is that ten?
Yeah, seventy-five hundred, I don't care. Go seventy-five hundred. Contingencies were a thousand and we spent thirteen hundred, that could probably stay a thousand.
Make it ten.
Let's go fifteen hundred?
Yeah. If we were to.
Who wants your first, Larry? SD?
Steve, you wanna take it down, you can get it, fuck. He's got an arm mostly for his father.
Larry's a good man.
How you guys, how you doing?
Did it?
John, do you have fire?
What?
Do you have fire?
The separate individual one, no, but I have the, the whole packet probably. I have the last year, this year page, is that what you're asking?
I got a fire.
You have fire?
I have.
Right?
Come on, solve the whole breakdown.
I have that.
Right, they really, they come down there.
I didn't have it, except the.
No worries.
Do you want this, the selfie?
I think that's may have. Oh. No, you, I have that already.
Oh.
It was a packet.
Okay.
Really, I got a partnership.
Like your little worksheet, I didn't have, but that's okay. The detailed report, so we wanna skip all the way down to legal services?
Yeah, exactly. Coming up, I don't like so.
We budgeted a thousand and you, you didn't use any, that's a good thing, I guess.
Yeah, we have an, an, an hole for any legal.
Okay.
If you have.
Okay, oh.
You need an attorney for five hundred bucks?
No, there's gonna be a one-fourth hour, boy. No, there's only one for that one, boy.
Uh, I T maintenance, uh, fifty-six hundred we budgeted, but you, uh, used eighty-two hundred.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, yeah, I, I'll put it up here, drop off the board, so, all the active stuff's going on, you know?
And you think that that would kind of be like, uh, still a one-time experience, but, uh, I T.
I mean.
Late fiscal year?
I figure, I mean, it shouldn't be too bad, I T should be fine there, so, six should be fine for that. Yeah, I think it was more of a paper hand, we had an issue with them, and they're, they're trying to do that, so.
No, it's, it's, it's mostly I T.
Okay, so that's, that like.
Purchases or.
Is giving them, having fun, fixing anything, really, so.
Well, it's not the fixing, too, it's the maintenance of our I T.
Okay.
Like, they, you know, double check on the wall, fire wall, so.
Uh-huh.
Server.
Okay.
So, that price is not gonna change unless they go up?
Right.
So, they track these up, right?
It's up, it was true.
When you always see it?
Probably ten?
Yeah.
Haven't had to cover the, other costs, yeah?
Office supplies, a thousand bucks, you spent seven, fifty, seven hundred and fifty, just leave that a thousand?
Need a fire.
Fire.
Yeah.
Fire services contracted out, we budgeted six thousand, you spent seventy-two?
So, is that a monthly, um, that's M A P?
What's that?
It's M A P A S, it's a monthly eighteen, eighteen a month.
Yeah, that, the, the majors.
Thank you.
Major's, yeah, also, both prices, well, yes, okay.
So, it's eighteen, eighteen times twelve.
How much?
Eighteen thirty-six, man.
Twenty-one eight six. One thousand, it's two thousand, I'm, well, twenty-one thousand eight six.
No, it's quarterly.
Quick, yeah, it's quarterly, if I have.
The, the biggest bill is quarter.
Quarterly, yeah.
How much, uh, four?
Some, we, so, eighteen, eighteen times four. Okay, we got it.
Next thing, so seventy-two, seventy-two, it's like a.
Yeah. So, seventy-five?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, now we can skip the office supplies. We budgeted a thousand, you spent seven forty-one, we just leave that a thousand?
Yeah.
Postage, we spent a hundred, hundred, budgeted a hundred, you didn't use any of it?
Maybe, also, the E N O, that's some.
Okay. Natural gas, we budgeted two thousand, you spent fourteen hundred fifty-one, I would leave that. That's pressure the generator, right?
Generator, eating, filling.
Uh, office equipment purchases, we budgeted five hundred, you didn't buy anything?
Yeah, we had the printer, that was about it, then I learned to purchase a lot of those last year, so.
Are you okay leaving?
Yeah.
Vehicle purchase, twenty-five thousand, and you didn't use anything?
That's what we're discussing, too, because, um, our vehicles are, last vehicle purchase was two and point, two thousand twelve. Uh, for the, uh, chief vehicles, and then also the brush truck is nineteen ninety-nine. Um, it's been repaired numerous times by, uh, the first fleet, it's on its, it's on its last leg, it's been one of her transportings all time, so. Other than maybe allocated for the, uh, early vehicle, for, you know, I think.
So, um, that's assuming you need three vehicles, and the police area, and maybe we can buy all those at one time, so. And what would be the most critical one, would be?
Uh, I mean, I'd, I'd say, you know, chief dick was probably the most thing, because, you know, like, you see, uh, the high mileage already, they're already twenty thirteen's. Uh, for this, you know, but getting older and older, it's costing more and more repairs, so. But, and then there's a company we looked at, too, for, um, chief vehicles, they're fully equipped with everything. Um, newer, uh, radios, or the same newer lights, I think that's all, I'm looking, probably, I mean, I know they allocated for, probably the same price as P D, about sixty thousand for a vehicle.
Well, there would be no grants for that either, like, it's not.
Yes, and that, that's where we have a good, yeah, we have grants on now for our brush truck. Um, that's if you get the grant, it's out there now, but, I mean, the allocation maybe for next year, they can find out where we're gonna go. If you get the grant, then we're, then we're golden, perfect, but if you don't get it, it's gonna be, you know, replaced.
You have any quotes, that's the one that would take to replace the chief car, that's what you're saying?
Yeah, the, the original, the chief, the chief car would be just the same, same price as the, the new P D car, same, same type of vehicle. Uh, which would be, uh, I don't know, there's a couple, companies we looked at, that does specifically for chief, fire, chief vehicles. It does a radio in the back for into the command, things like that, you do have on hand. Um, different radios inside for fire department, things like that, like, different lights, because you can't use the red and blue, it's like.
Then the, uh, what's your, Steve, what was your price for the Durango's, what are they, sixty thousand?
Sixty thousand, yeah.
Sixty.
I think I got a gentleman at Carl's Emergency System, he called, he's sending me a quote, um, he, over the phone, he said between fifty and sixty, right on there, kind of what we're looking at. Um, right, looking, these are fancy, lots of crazy, so, yeah, okay, there's two vehicles there, two chief vehicles there, so, and then, you know.
You told him that the mayor of senior.
I just told the mayor, when you're senior system, you just see this kind of, yeah.
I don't think we afford to do them both, one year, no?
Or even, yeah. Well, no, the chief vehicles, the brush truck is on it, it's still on the grant.
No, and you're talking about some chief vehicles.
See, these are one, no, it's one, it's all, it's one.
Yeah, we do one, right?
Yeah, okay, so, so should we put in, um, sixty-five, but make sure that's.
Sixty-five?
Right.
Uh, office equipment lease, we had five hundred, we didn't use any of it? Office equipment maintenance, we had two hundred, didn't use any?
Uh, yeah.
Leave it, vehicle repair and maintenance, six thousand, we used seven thousand seventy-one, but this should get better with a new vehicle, right?
Correct, that's what we're, you know.
What, what, like, when it said it was covering the repair for the chief's car?
Yeah, the old vehicles.
It's a little, maybe a thousand.
Or maybe three thousand, because you still have one old one.
Right.
We go three thousand?
Three thousand?
Radio maintenance, five hundred, we didn't use it. Equipment maintenance, we had, uh, five thousand, we only used three thousand?
Oh, what's that, I'm sorry. Yeah, back up here, it was down here.
So, what's your, that's, what's your, what kind of equipment maintenance is that?
That's the, the top gear.
Oh.
Can we back up, Phil, on the vehicle maintenance repair? That's all the vehicles, not just the chief vehicles.
Right.
That's the engines and everything else, too, so. One engine, one branch is actually in shop now for, in repair.
No, we own equipment, right?
Oh. Then, oh, you said you reduced the vehicle repair and maintenance, right?
Oh, we went to three thousand.
Yeah, but that's on all the vehicles.
Oh, so we're gonna leave it?
I'd say yes, you saw me, yeah.
All right, change that back to six thousand?
Yeah.
All right, so now we're at equipment maintenance.
Mm-hmm.
That must be your, what you use to fight fires, that part?
Equipment stuff, stuff we use for the equipment side of the, in, you know?
No, it's for the, the printer.
Yeah, printer's in that, okay.
Printer and, um.
Oh, it is?
The service repairs, on, um, the fire fix, the meter.
Yeah, the meters, meter calibration, some of that, for our gas meters, and that we use for, for gas leaks.
So, just leave it at five thousand, then?
I would, yeah, our private should be fine, yeah.
Phone service, thirty-five hundred, we used just over a thousand. Yeah, that's probably our old phone prices before we switched.
Yeah. It's me system one.
The phone services with this, our news, the Netform Fortress, and it's also the Air Card, and.
Okay.
I'll go down a little?
Go down?
Two?
Yeah, go to two thousand, that's good. Cable and internet, three thousand, we used twenty-four hundred, just leave that. Dues and membership, five hundred. We used a hundred. I guess just leave that one. Gasoline and oil for the vehicles, we, uh, budgeted five thousand, you only used thirty-nine hundred. Just leave that. Personnel training, we, uh, budgeted four thousand, and we used thirty-four hundred.
That's because of our grants, you had guys, you had guys on the grant, so, we had a lot of guys on the grant, so that's where our person plus.
Hey, we still have to budget for it, even though it was paid via the grant?
Yes, that's a five, four, yeah.
That's the rule.
Yeah.
I asked that question before, did we use up all that first grant?
I don't know.
We'll have a look at that. Remember, the Brown and Kelly grant?
I don't think, like, ever, do they, uh, but you know, Steve, I know.
Yes, uh, no, we still, we're getting another large sum back, uh, that we spent, and we just got approved, uh, for an amendment. So, the amendment is, uh, uh, since we hired a lot of, uh, members that were already qualified with E M T, is we can only hire who applies. We amended it to switch it from the, uh, E M Ts to personal protective equipment. So, now that money's gonna go to be able to buy more P P E for the new members, so save the village even more money moving forward. So, we can encompass that full amount instead of giving any back.
Yeah.
Because if we give any back, that means they can give it to whoever they want now. So, now we'll be able to use that full amount.
So, we're going to four thousand? Health examinations were, uh, five hundred, we, I guess we didn't do any of those?
They had them.
They took it after, right?
Yeah.
Keep that in it, encompasses very regulatory compliance as well.
I know we sent them, where, where, where does it go when we, uh, send people for physicals or?
Physicians immediate.
Yeah, physician.
Like a drug test after an accident, would come on to that one?
Correct, yeah, that would go.
Yes.
So, good thing we didn't have any of those.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Okay, so this next one was a new one that we didn't even use?
What?
Medical supplies, health.
What's the crew?
Yes, one of them.
To create what?
It's in, not only corporation, that'd be, well, level four.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, we do need medical equipment and supplies.
What do you, what do you supply?
They had to buy, like, gloves and stuff.
Gloves, gauze, all of this, so that it doesn't replace by where they're, uh, medical, like, for. A splint for broken bones, that's, we can.
No, this is for them, like, when they're out on the walk.
Well, that's.
So, you do have an idea, that's what they spend it to point B for?
Um, you think, I mean. Probably twenty-five hundred, that's three thousand, maybe, they cover all the repose and the cost cells, that's all.
You know what they used to do, they used to get the stuff from the hospitals?
We used to all the time, and, yeah, that's, we can't do that no more, again, we used to get from Bud's, Bud's a lot of times. Or sometimes get personal stuff, like, the new I G L, uh, innovation stuff is something to purchase, too, because it's not randomly given, so.
Yeah, they used to refill all their bags when they went to the hospital, hospital supplies, everybody did that.
We could definitely, it could, then purchase for the blood.
So, what do we put there, three or twenty-five, three? Yeah.
Okay.
How much?
Wait, what, it would be three of my?
Say, twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay.
Uniform expenses, we budgeted two thousand, and you used five hundred?
Yeah, that's the things we're, we're trying to get more guys to go, because it needs to be, like, the par, so. Uh, we got a couple of quads and some things, grant, too, that allocate to that equipment, too, for, you fold uniforms, um.
For that new hires, like?
New hires, yeah, new hires like that, so, if everybody across the board, I was thinking, if you take that two thousand, increase it to three, and then get everybody new, newer uniform, they can wear more, um, public, of the defense we have, if that's what they all goes, all, the par.
Oh, well, you.
You got three uniforms, correct, yes.
I don't think you wanna make a break?
As he had three, should be counted for that, fine, so.
Safety apparel, budgeted fifteen hundred, and you didn't use any?
That's mostly like our safety stuff outside, the vest, things like that, so, if you use any, that's like.
New trucks, ready.
I T fifteen hundred, we had used.
What's that?
The gloves you go on, the B E M, that's a.
Were that, were that before the, uh, the stuff in the bag?
Was it a game, that's, but?
I don't know. Why that just?
Bouncy.
No, I'm not saying to call it that, but. No, preventing that we use under, the E N M, that's equipment and supply for the bouncy.
Is bouncy, correct, yeah.
I think just lay down, okay? Yeah.
I'm sorry, you feel, so where did this stuff?
Still, same, you're there.
Now, we kind of went to equipment, but they didn't use any of that.
So, what is safety apparel?
I'm, I'm sorry, I T purchases.
So, what is safety apparel, they were leaving fifteen hundred?
No, go down?
Yeah, no.
Oh, go down like a thousand or something.
Oh. Kind of like down the line.
I'm getting signal five hundred, go to five hundred.
On what I T project?
No, that's safety apparel.
Five hundred?
Yeah.
No, I T project.
Yeah, read that. Equipment purchase, we budgeted five thousand, and spent thirty-six thousand, what was that?
That was, well, that, that's one of the equipments we just purchased on the, the grants that they had, too. All the, other, all the equipments on one big thing, after we're rebuilding, you, you need new radios, too, for the department, too, so at least three new radios.
So, some of that equipment purchase was covered by the grant?
Pressure, yeah.
Yes, that's correct. That's one of the, the grant tools we had, tools you follow the grant, getting that, so. Yeah.
Twenty-six thousand, make thirty-seven.
Yeah.
So, now we just leave it five thousand?
I was thinking, well, we, our new radios are gonna be roughly around three to eight thousand dollars. So, the, the, the eight thousand radios are kind of expensive, so, um, with the more guys in the department, more seats being taken up on the rig. They all need your person, they all need radios, everybody needs radio on the scene at least, so.
Do you think that that might be in a grant to land?
We looked around the grant, and I, I know that the maybe twenty-four is having something going on, enough has been allocated, enough has been set yet, but. Three radios at a time right now would be suffice to, you know, house and rest of our stuff, so.
And what we anticipated that would come?
Um, what?
Ten each, then, Steve?
Approximately eight dollars.
Eight dollars each?
Twenty-four?
Yeah. Or they're not, they're not cheap, right, it was, they're not, radios, right?
So, you said, twenty thousand, I mean, twenty-five thousand, like.
Twenty-four, yeah, that's, you cover all the stuff, too, yeah, so.
Fireman funeral assessment, five hundred, we spent a hundred and twenty-eight?
Yeah, that's, that's funeral assessment funds.
Yeah, yeah. Fireman value somewhere.
Yeah.
I need one of the neighboring ones, guy, we contribute.
Yeah, if you just give something, you know?
Uh, contract emergency medical service, we budgeted thirty-five and spent thirty-one?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
That's the buds?
It's bud, yes, it's bud, that's his part, pretty much. We leave that very much, obviously, thirty-five, yeah, so it's probably the same.
E M S, equipment and supplies, six thousand, we spent eighty-three hundred, E M S equipment and supply. A W thirty.
That was a lot of stuff, you were very, very person beforehand, where you had a hand, as it doesn't go well.
Is he picking on me? I'm reading, like, multiple lines at the same time. Um, so, what are we gonna do with that one?
I think we can leave it, I think we'll at least have one, there's one sixty-nine, I think.
Hundred and thirty dollars.
Yeah, we spent only a hundred and thirty dollars, we budgeted six thousand. That's the same category, where it's probably stuff you put in your bag, right?
Correct, yeah, it's kind of the little thing that does that, that, that thing, so, and there's new equipment coming out now, new things like that. Like, we used to have the, just, in revenue basis, like, these, now it's the new I G L stuff, and that's cost effective, too, it's any more costs.
But if we make it twelve thousand, I don't know, maybe twelve hundred.
Maybe two, do you want? Huh? Maybe two? Again, two thousand.
Regulatory compliance, we budgeted twenty thousand and spent fifteen thousand.
Right. That is the, now that's where we put exams, so, exams.
And the grant actually covered that, right? And the grant actually covered that, right?
Yeah, it's ready for that, so.
Building repairs and maintenance, three thousand, we spent only six hundred and sixty dollars, that's good. Everything's okay?
We do have some lights that we repaired, so, we have some lights that flow out, so. So those made repair to, so, it wasn't expensive, so. How much you make for that one?
Two.
Two?
Fire inspection expense, five hundred, we didn't use any of it. Contingencies, two thousand, we didn't use any. Take the contingencies down to one thousand, right, that's kinda what every department asks.
Hundred thousand.
Okay.
Also, where's the, the curb on a hundred forty-first and, um, the direct fire part there, when we repair that curb maybe? It's cracking and.
Well, that would be, I mean, that would be part of it, that'd be a difficult.
Like the north side of the firehouse, so.
It should have been public works on the streets, right?
Well, it'll come, it will come in MFT.
Okay.
But I'm glad you thought that, I would put that on the curb.
Yeah.
Which one is bad, the one right on the border?
The north side one, yeah.
Been hit a lot with fire.
I guess we kicked you out of that, I think.
You kicked me out of here. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Right.
Thank you. You too.
We're not doing all of it today, it's not that long. I don't remember. Hello, I haven't been here.
What?
I have not been here.
We, uh, we were hoping they were all ready, we were hoping to get done today.
I, I think it's bad.
We can't do it tomorrow. So we have to set up another time, then?
Yeah.
We're gonna have to. Tomorrow doesn't work for a couple of us.
Right.
Not me? Yeah. Somebody could cover for me, it's okay. Um, do we, uh, what's, what's your schedule like next week? Are you here or not?
Yeah, I'm here, next week.
Okay, so we're gonna pull this from that? Skip it down to what?
I think we could probably do that court attendance one, right, cause we're only budgeting a thousand, we spent fifteen hundred. Are we gonna increase that one?
Maybe fifteen?
All right. We're on a little higher just because I'm at forty-two. The, uh, it's the court attendance, we've only budgeted a thousand and we spent fifteen hundred, so we should probably raise that one. That's it.
Yeah.
Forty-two? And then we'll skip down to?
Court attendance, what was it? It was about, about, I think, it was number forty-two.
Forty-one, zero, 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 and then, and then we'll skip down after that?
Then it's one twenty-one, eight, sixty. Oh, that's, um, when Dina, Steve, they, they, we're not, so, it goes to court, and that's sixty dollars. It's about the tons that they have to work.
And we're thirty-eight, right?
So we only budgeted a thousand, right?
We're saying it should be fifteen hundred. Right.
Okay.
And that will scoop down to, what do you think?
The one about him down here.
Pass uniform allowance or something?
No, legal policy?
Give me a number.
Twenty.
You want, wait, I'm in there. Oh, legal services, special counsel? We have a question. Now that, uh, overtime is not taxable, we don't change anything in payroll to cover that, do we? We have to specify what's regular time and what's overtime?
I agree with that.
Right?
Thank you so much.
Oh, you do that anyway?
It's probably a new, new, uh.
It's up to the individual, they draw their taxes, right? It's like a thing you get back at income tax, yeah, cause it went into effect immediately. So like half the year, people, if their overtime's not going to be taxed, but they'll get a deduction for the taxes paid. All right. I was just wondering if it's something we have to not take taxes out for, but we still take taxes out, and then they get a bigger check.
Oh, yeah?
Right. We do two cities that's deductible. Senior citizens get a big one, too, we get six thousand in person, once you're sixty-five and over. That's up for the deduction.
What can I expect?
When you file your taxes next time.
Well, I can get an extra six thousand, though.
A deduction, a six thousand deduction.
With the cash.
It's prorated probably, right, it'll be prorated, yeah, cause it'll be half the year. But I get six for me and six for Lonnie. Um, she's worth keeping.
Oh, boy. It's gonna come up again.
Don't tell her that. Lonnie don't watch the video. Okay, so we went to legal counsel. We, uh, we budgeted six thousand, only spent forty-five?
No, we budgeted sixty.
I'm sorry, sixty thousand and spent forty-five.
That sounds like working good, too, didn't I bring anyone?
No, no. So we wanna just leave that?
Yeah. How's that from, that was standing, is that?
No, that's like all of them.
We did really well then, with what was going on, and we only spent, forty-five thousand.
You should lower it to.
Lower, no.
We made a pretty good cash bill with all the stuff going on, and we spent forty-five thousand.
That's just what they've, those are so fine. If, if it's continually, if it's still going on, every year you're gonna have a gun.
Oh. So just leave it? I'll say, see, this is, have those, the turnip peas also.
Oh, yeah.
Or dispatch. Oh, dispatch, oh, okay. It's, uh, so it's dispatch?
Yes.
We're gonna go up with that one. Steve, you weren't at the last meeting, but a lot of residents complained about when they called nine-one-one?
Mm-hmm.
Or what they call the non-emergency, they're not treated.
Nicely.
Yeah, maybe that's a good term. Yeah. Something we have, we probably need to talk to them. Yeah, but dispatch people.
Making us treating them too.
Yeah, they're not treated professionally if they call the non-emergency. So I just, you know, whatever. Needs to be addressed. So we're gonna raise that to what, one thirty?
Okay.
Yeah, Luke. IT maintenance, we, uh, budgeted thirty thousand and spent thirty-six thousand?
Yep.
Does? So is it good at thirty or no?
No, it's not good at thirty.
Forty, do you want to get? This might get forty then.
Yeah.
Vehicle, empty big terminals. We, uh, budgeted twelve thousand, didn't use any, but I know we wanted to use them this time.
Right, yeah, with the new vehicles.
He's looking at new laptops, right?
Yeah.
Of books or something?
Yeah, for the vehicles, yep.
Did we order a new smartphone there?
Yes.
Yeah, what?
So what? To change whatever terminals you need to change, how much money do you need?
Keep that the same.
You can do it with twelve thousand. ETSB, which I don't know what it stands for.
That used to be the dispatch line item. We don't use it there?
No, we just put it into outside services. And we need it. Probably get rid of it, Luke. Professional consulting expenses. We use that either, we didn't budget that either.
The, we didn't let it get to the line, so, that's like putting on there, and she wanted the line item for it.
Oh, she did?
Yeah. Want to be separate from outside services.
You know, the one that she wanted, she always highlighted in her son. The new one's not on appropriation.
If, if it would have had, if, if it would have had an appropriation, no, but it doesn't.
Oh. So what do you wanna put in it?
Nope, I bet E, I bet ETSB, Steve, don't we, they have these like meetings, okay?
They do, yeah, the nine-one-one.
And then, is it, is there a fee or is there a money that we get or?
Yeah, we're allotted a percent for nine-one-one fee. And that's, it sounds like.
Under this umbrella?
Yeah. Under ETSB, but we haven't had to use that line.
So money can come in.
That's, that's an expense, that's revenue.
Correct.
So revenue, but it doesn't mean the damn unit.
Correct, yes, that's right. Yeah, it doesn't mean the unit.
Okay, then let her move.
We still have the better consulting expense.
We already have those right services.
I have no.
Yeah, I have, um, if I could take the doc, if you.
Ask about those two then, right?
Yeah.
Ask about eight and eighty-one. We'll take a break. Our clock's broke again, no?
Yeah.
Or it has been.
Is that ten minutes to play?
Exactly, or?
Try and use your battery.
Take it down.
Double eight. Oh, I'm sorry, I said eighteen, eighty, when did it been seventy-five and eighty?
So seventy-seven and eighty were previous accounts for the treasurer under previous administration. That were used, that are, had been inactive for a while now, and she can take them out without a problem with your approval.
Okay, okay, thank you. Police services contracted.
I'm sorry, ETSB is on, what's the element of the one?
Michael Rowett.
Okay.
Seventy-five and eighty.
Okay.
Scratch them. Uh, police services that are contracted, we budgeted ten thousand and we only spent twenty-four hundred.
That is a range.
That's, uh, yearly, yeah.
Yeah, yearly.
That's linwood.
Maybe for maybe five?
No, we're good for three years or something, right, I think you pay three years.
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you wanna lower that to five?
Yeah, we can lower it. We probably even should specify that, no?
What we got?
It's, uh, shooting range fee. Right, Luke, does that have to be named in there?
If this is a, I'm a shooter, I'm a traitor. I know what you want to spend, but what was it now?
Well, if that's all we ever use it for, that we will know next time.
I'm not willing to change the names.
Or add this, add.
Gun range.
Right.
Fire.
Yeah. Wanna add that to the description, Luke? Make a note. Range fee, it's right?
Yeah.
We will know.
And there was five thousand?
But it's, yes, but we had twenty-four hundred.
Only some, uh.
Fifteen thousand, and we spent a hundred thousand.
That was a body count.
Was that a grant or that's something we had to do?
That was something mandated by the state.
But they made us do it.
Right.
Like, so nice of them.
So, you know, that one.
Look, we are, uh, looking to get new bulletproof vests for the officer, and that would be twelve thousand dollars.
A peak?
No, total.
So we leave the fifteen thousand?
Yeah, I just, just to know, we were praying.
So leave fifteen thousand, then uncover the new vest.
Mm-hmm.
Office supplies, seven thousand, we've only spent thirty-one hundred.
We're gonna make a five.
Go to five. Hostage a thousand, we spent sixteen hundred.
Would you anticipate that?
Uh, no, I would say, probably if we could keep it at a thousand, because I won't have to send out as much mail anymore, since we passed new ordinance for one hearing. So I used to have to send three mailings, one each month, now I'll have to send one. Cut down on that, yeah.
Publication, five hundred, and we didn't use it.
That would be for, yeah, that would be for like, uh, a blue line, you know, where we're, we have part-time opening, full-time openings, they charge you for that.
I think maybe a five. Purchase office equipment and software, a thousand bucks, we didn't use it.
A trustee is hoping if we could get three, three new office chairs, they're all tore up and beat up, uh, in the administrative wing.
Would we include that one day?
Uh, around like two, three hundred each, so under a thousand.
Flipped out.
But, I don't know if she would put that there, though.
Wait, you want new offices, we got chairs, we got them at that plane, so.
Oh, yeah, no, if you had something, that'd be great, I just wanted to throw that out there, I just wrote a note down.
We got them, they're like twenty bucks, thirty bucks?
Okay.
Where are they at?
We're restoring them.
Luke, where are we restoring the chairs?
We need to move, or we're using us.
But Andy didn't know, and he's asking.
Oh. Um, Christina has the.
She's in, oh, okay.
So wait, where are we at? Office.
Yeah, office equipment and software, right? Who's bringing the chairs under there?
Okay, so I've got a question, like, for when we see coming to the library there? Where the chairs?
I appreciate it.
We did the purchase. You've already ordered one to be in.
Correct, yes.
We anticipate that'll be about sixty grand.
Yes, it is.
You mean reduce it till you look at?
Same. Except if budget goes to eight, thirty, twenty, six.
So you have to leave it. You have to leave it.
One that we're not getting yet, that should we have?
Yeah.
Right, because it'll cover both, right?
Okay, now this sixty-six thousand, so what would this spend on with that repair, what's the fee? What do you have on?
Uh.
Damage?
No, no.
No, I got zero.
That's zero, completely, it's definitely. What I'm all the time, what? What I'm asking, we spend it.
So off the quarter state?
That's the, uh, that's the printer right now.
So we don't afford it, right?
So, I'm sorry, so what, we didn't include these cars, are we buying one more?
No.
They really need that one for.
We might want to just get another one. Buy it, only call the court, they keep it repaired now, so we don't have to spend as much money.
I don't even know the next oldest one. I have no idea.
Twenty.
One of those sedans?
It's twenty fifteen.
It's one of those sedans, right?
Twenty twelve and twenty fifteen are the, the oldest in the fleet right now.
All right, thank you. Yeah, that's good. Three one vehicle, repairing maintenance. Thirty grand, we spent fifty-two.
So that's how much we need, eight vehicle.
A lot of those new explorers, does that cover their warranty when all those transmissions went out? I sure hope so.
Yeah, the, the, some of the catastrophic repairs for the older vehicles, twenty seventeen. Twenty seventeen four. They needed a whole new transmission.
All that other stuff done, did it, too, like tires and brakes and all that?
Everything, yeah, oil, even oil change.
Oil changes, yeah. So what do we want to do with that one? Any idea, anybody have any suggestion? We want to leave it at thirty thousand.
That for repairs, right?
Yeah, but if we get some new vehicles then.
Thirty-five?
All right.
Do everything we can to keep the repairs down to a minimum.
You said twenty-five?
Thirty-five.
Okay.
Got to tell the police we're not going to break so much. Or burn up the tire. Drive it like you own it. Radio maintenance, five hundred, we didn't use any.
We can label where it was, right?
Mm-hmm. Did Minor go out of business, that Minor Electronics?
So now Chicago Communication that are on there.
Oh, so they merged with that?
Yeah, and that's where we get like our radio show now.
Know what that is? So equipment maintenance, four thousand, we spent twenty-one hundred.
We can leave it or take it down to three thousand?
We can take it down, trustee, you guys are okay with that?
And then equipment purchases.
So that's like.
Maintenance.
Yeah, maintenance. What do you do now?
I'm looking at what it is.
Oh. I'm reading like two ones at the same time.
Right.
Uh, we're at phone service.
Yeah, sure.
Ten thousand, we've spent sixty-one.
We'll make it seven to five, huh?
Okay. Cable and internet services, five thousand, we spent sixty-eight hundred.
That's all the ear cards again? For all the internet for the vehicles.
We anticipate that'll need decreasing?
No.
Probably no, with new vehicles coming in, we're gonna need new computers and more ear cards now.
Should we make it eight now? Seven?
So. I think it's seven five.
I know they have, the state raised, approved raising the taxes on cell phones, so I'm sure that'll all go. Security and alarm, twenty-five hundred, we spent twenty-seven hundred. Is that all the door things and all that?
That is, yes, with accredited data centers.
That should be okay, we're done with that, right?
I would think.
Mods for all the doors, all that stuff?
Right, right.
We, we'll probably leave that. I think, the same.
Twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty-five hundred. I still think the lights are all wrong, but they haven't fixed that yet.
What light?
Uh, none of the keypads, they like bring them, when you, when you walk to one, when you put your card, they go red, it's backward, so it's the other way around.
Yeah. Well, I don't have a card, I think you have.
Your fob, your key fob, mods are backwards, I, they just didn't fix it, I talked to you about it.
As long as it opens though, I don't worry.
That was two thousand, we spent seventeen hundred, it's probably gonna be the same, two thousand is probably good.
Yeah.
Right, gasoline and oil for police vehicles. Thirty-five, we spent thirty-two, probably okay, right? Police training, forty-five hundred, we only spent nine hundred and seven, do you?
Fifteen hundred?
Are you gonna get some new policemen?
Yeah, yes.
Send them some training?
Yes.
They don't go down too low. Health inspections, fifteen hundred, we didn't have any.
But the new hires, we'll have to sign them.
Physicals. Which is a piece of like five hundred or less?
Three hundred.
So leave that? Here's what she wants to add, health medical supplies. They spent, uh, two thousand dollars and we didn't have anything budgeted.
That's the cabinet, right, Louis?
Oh, the ADD?
Yeah.
ADD.
Yeah.
And then one may.
And the rest of the cabinet.
Medicine care? Do they all get handled by the same people?
Yeah.
Yes.
Twenty-one five?
So that's, uh, health examination. What, no, the health medical supply.
Yeah, medical supplies.
Six twenty-one.
Twenty-five.
Needles for prisoners, we, uh, spent seven hundred and ten. Did we still get a big deal on that or no? We used to.
Yeah, through Sandwich Castle, we used to get a really good deal.
Like a block or something? That's pretty cheap.
You know, he came up there that would be.
Really?
Yeah. How's he doing?
That's what I thought.
Oh, I know what you're talking about. Yeah. Does he still own it then?
No.
I guess he's still, whatever happened, but he, you know, he got to say, he's still up there.
It would use a certain dollar. Dollar same. And that's good, what, thousand? Impound expenses. Five hundred, we used five hundred, that's a fee, have to get some of that money. IT purchases, we budgeted a hundred and five thousand, spent twenty-eight thousand. That has to be your body cameras too.
So that was, the body cameras, plus, or then it also covers the flock, the license plate readers, we had, that assists our investigation. So that, I mean, obviously we don't need the body cameras now, but we still need the flock, and I think that was twenty, about eighteen thousand.
And I think it went up.
That's our yearly fee?
Or monthly? I mean, our yearly fee, yeah. Those aren't.
I thought you were gonna call on that. The license plate readers, that if you're going ninety-three miles an hour, that doesn't catch you.
And it went out.
One of you on I T there?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
One of them's Sam.
You go to twenty thousand? Or twenty-five? Or does he want to add any new ones? Wasn't he talking about someplace the other day that we don't have one that we should?
Oh, yes, uh, well, he, the biggest thing what we would like to do is kind of incorporate the community service officers more, especially at that window, where there are another set of eyes, to try to put more cameras throughout town and they're watching, so they're kind of like an extra officer and eyes and ears in town. So that instead of, you know, make them incorporated more with the, uh, work they're doing. So the chief really would have liked, if it's feasible, to put a couple more cameras like that through our I T around town. So they get some hot spots around town. And that would be decided by, obviously, the board and the, the chief of police and the administration.
Do we have any anticipation what that might cost, do we have a projection?
Uh, that would be maybe consultation with the I T. But I would have to see how much they've charged in the past for putting up the cameras throughout town. That was just an idea he had moving forward.
Well, obviously, we need as much security as possible, because you know, we have a lot of crazy things going on all the time. We want to try to protect the community as much as possible, so. Maybe we're spending that much to do that.
And instead of say, a hundred thousand that we have there in I T, maybe a little less, but enough to cover some more cameras throughout town.
Okay, well then, why don't we need this open for right now, and why don't you talk to him and try to get that removed to be able to fire?
Absolutely.
But we could get them paid off that.
Thank you, man.
Small equipment purchases. Ten thousand, we spent fifteen thousand, what was that?
That was, uh, it was actually, it looks like it's a, should have been put in the vehicle purchase line item, it's a Dodge, no, that used Dodge Ram we got, the white one? For thirteen thousand, seven twenty-four, should have been in the vehicle purchase line item.
No, that was to do the, all the, um, those public safety.
It was to do all the lights and sirens? For the vehicles, for both, right?
Well, for the, the Rams.
Okay.
One, unit seventeen.
The pickup truck?
The unit seventeen.
Oh, that's why it said name, they were looking for a better name in there? Or is that why, that's why she had to know G L name?
Yeah.
What are we gonna call it? She want to call it lights and siren, I don't care. I mean.
Is it? Vehicle equipment, I don't, you know?
Yeah, because it's.
I would say. What do you call, what would you call the equipment you add onto a car to make it a police car?
Accessories. Lights and sirens.
I would say lights and sirens, to me, I'd be okay with that.
But it's not just that, it's also the, or the wrap.
Yeah, it's the, although, go everything.
Modifications? Vehicle modifications, there you go. That would cover them all.
Well, right now it's called equipment purchase. So she's saying small equipment purchase.
It needs a better name.
Better. Right now it says equip, it's, the name is equipment purchase, she would like it to call small equipment purchase.
There need to be a little bit more defined than that.
Right.
But it's not defined for us, it's defined for her, when she categorizes it, so for the auditor.
Well, I know, but it's also defined for the, well.
I think I would change it to something like modification. Right? Yeah, right, let's do that, Louis.
Yeah.
Build a note, we'll say vehicle modifications. In that way, that'll cover the wraps, it'll cover the lights, it'll cover the sirens.
So if we add it, we could, they could have didn't come with it.
We can take the mayor's pickup truck, the license sirens.
When you call auditor, it's, it's equipment, so it's an asset. So vehicle modification goes and identify it as being an asset or, um, you guys have to think auditor.
Right, it's, 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 but we already have the vehicle purchase, this is just upgrading the vehicle. Right? That's what we're kind of. I'm all clarity, you know, the battle, right? Yeah, go with that. Yeah. We paid a lot of. Made, made your case test for twenty-five hundred, we spent two thousand. Is that our fee, like yearly fee, two grand or something?
That is, uh, yes, two thousand.
We're sleeping at twenty-four hundred? Regulatory compliance. Four thousand, we spent four hundred.
Uh, what is that about, Steve?
That, that's more the, uh, medical equipment for the first aid cabinet, we could probably lower that.
Maybe to five.
Yeah.
Building repairs and maintenance. We, twenty nine, it's been twenty.
And was that for the roof?
Roof, the fence, and the, all the blank top, for the, all around here.
We could lower that quite a bit, if we got some happenstance.
Yeah, because we had it for a lot last time. Can we turn some, any part of the doors, the windows?
Yeah, the biggest thing we have is the, the garage door.
Garage door maintenance.
That's our biggest, yeah, that's our biggest thing, the garage door.
I know this door.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just teasing about these dealers.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
I was teasing about these.
Oh, because the police is open twenty four.
The garage door.
That's what's under.
That's really the mean. So you could probably lower that, you're probably okay for now, right? How do we change springs when it breaks?
And I mean, it's open, and all, all, yeah, the springs definitely change.
What did they have done to it?
Just maintenance.
New springs and everything, uh, add a pack and order, a new motor. Roller spring.
You can bring that much money in there.
I mean, was that done?
There was done.
There was two on there. Then you have the fence, like Steve said, so that was like eighteen. So what are we bringing in town today?
Ten grand, five grand?
Five.
Five? In contingencies, we'll leave it a thousand, like we leave everybody else.
Thank you, Steve. Don't forget August fifth, National Night Out.
Hello.
Hey, how are you? Good to see you.
How are you?
Good to see you.
Did I knock that other one out, totally on emergency service and disaster? Leave that one the way it is? Okay, we did that one.
Thank you, thank you, good seeing you. Do you have that?
Oh, I have it, it was all in that package. Right, I just lost your package, yeah. You dumped it somewhere near death, oh, maybe your door was locked. Mine was in the office, I think, right? Okay, so we're at the community center?
Yep.
Coordinated what, we think it's just that separate? Pension, separate, I T maintenance? Twenty five hundred, we spent thirty seven hundred, but I think all the computers have been gone over?
It's just the maintenance, the monthly maintenance, yeah. We're like two eighty four a month.
Well, you can make it, I mean, I'm very good at four.
All of the ones that are connected to the service office, servers?
The ones that people use that don't come and use them, does it ever need a monthly?
It, it's, um, it, we all split the cost of, of the maintenance that we do on a server and, and the upgrades and.
And kind of what?
I thought you and John, you know, computers, I heard, outside working.
Office supplies, four hundred, we spent almost seven hundred.
Mm-hmm.
What do we wanna do with it?
I would probably leave it. We probably can make it eight.
What are we buying?
What's that?
Paper pencil, yes.
Fan cake.
Oh, cupcake? Didn't she say cupcake?
You would think of friend.
Friends gather, kind of tapping the print back? You gotta make a road way as little, at least a recon.
Natural gas.
From U line.
You wanna drop natural gas down from two thousand?
Wait, wait, go back, back to office supply.
The U line is going to office supply.
Right, so or, what you ordered the latest? Seven hundred?
All right, so now we go to natural gas? Two thousand, we only spent a thousand, so we able to go to fifteen hundred for that?
So you have to call the administration.
Electric expense. Must not.
I will discuss that.
No, no one's not there, then, I don't know, anyway.
We didn't buy anything? Leave it?
That was the, we used M and N mechanicals in science? That was the, you finished on the others?
What is that?
The vendor was M and N mechanical.
Oh, that's my, oh, yeah.
So that was three of them. July, July, and January. Because we've got the furnace, or the AC, or generator. That's a bit like. So what am I making?
It was two thousand before.
Right, we spent the.
We probably can make it two thousand. Maybe we'll be fifty five.
Phone, five hundred, leave it?
Yep.
Cable and internet, forty two hundred, spent forty one, eighty six. Probably leave it?
Four, maybe four, four.
Forty five, maybe, still forty one? Yeah, because some of those costs, they keep getting going up. Security and alarm, five hundred, we spent seven thirty. I would go up a thousand bucks.
Okay.
Health medical supplies, not on the appropriation, those are your A D Bs, right?
Right, right.
Are they the same price for each building?
It's a, it's a monthly fee, it's a monthly fee, a one thirty fee.
For all of them, or for all buildings? For each building?
For each building?
So you wanna go to twelve hundred?
So it's a monthly fee.
You wanna go to twelve hundred or fifteen hundred?
Okay.
I T purchases, thousand bucks, we didn't use it. Equipment purchase, three thousand, we didn't use it. I could lower that one, right?
Go lower it to a thousand.
Okay.
You're not gonna purchase a new generator, a new furnace?
No, that wouldn't cover that anyway.
Well, you'd have to raise it, but that's where you do it.
No, we're good.
Whatever's left of a thousand.
The furnaces? Air conditioning just went out of warranty, right? Another, there's, that fire engine has a separate air conditioner, but it's okay. No, we're good. Building repairs and maintenance, ten thousand. Uh, we should probably everything covered by the time a million dollars is spent, right? I might, you might wanna go, yeah, go a thousand, you might have a problem yesterday.
Rose pest comes there and it's seventy six dollars. We may probably.
The pest control people.
The building repairs and maintenance. You gotta go somewhere. For like eighty four dollars, sorry.
He did a thousand bucks. Three thousand, spent four hundred and fifty eight. Probably okay.
We'll be ready, make it two.
Make it two. You're selling all those tables, you should be making money. I said, you're selling all those tables, you should be making money. Just buy a whole bunch of tables.
The canopy.
Some, some of them are broken.
They're broken, but the wind took one of them there.
We don't have that, we need that.
Okay, Wes, now we are taking that. I'm gonna breathe out, keep out a little bit of that.
All right. Contingencies are okay, miscellaneous. I don't even know why we have both. Why, why do we have miscellaneous in a contingency?
Well, we calling the other, uh, contingency, right, so that we can definitely, you're gonna miss that, that's right.
Right.
Correct?
Yep.
Yeah.
That's it for today?
Yep.
Oh, we better set. Why, everybody got a set of time for next week?